Okay, welcome to the Celine Planning Commission for the City of Celine on Wednesday, March 10th, 2021. Those present in the meeting, you want to take a roll call? Those of you need to tell us what township or city you're in.
Here, Celine, Michigan.
Here, York Township.
Here, Portage, Michigan.
You're muted, Dan.
Okay. Here, City of Celine.
Also in attendance tonight is City Planner Atkins, Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Green, and Deputy Clerk. They have a motion to approve the agenda as distributed. Second. It's been moved to F., Sheriff seconded Morrow to approve the agenda. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Those who say no, ayes carried. There's also a motion to approve the minutes on February 24th, 2021, as submitted. It's been moved to Young, seconded Carroll to approve the meeting on February 24th, 2021. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 All those who say no, ayes carried. Citizen comments. In the open meetings, at least citizens may come forward at any time and make comments under reasonable limits, which may be established by the body. Person is requested but not required to state their name and address for record. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Not seeing any.
There's something in the chat I can't hear.
That was us saying, "Oh, sorry," abruptly.
We'll start with our public hearings. Twenty-one dash oh-six, there's an application from John Daniels of Chelsea Lumber Company for the preliminary site plan amendment to develop 2.4 acres and construct three new storm sewer water detention ponds located on a 7.38 acre lot at 600 East Michigan Ave, Celine, Michigan, parcel number 181231390-017. We'll start with a report from Chris, from Planner Atkins. It's all yours. He's you.
Okay, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Alright, so as you recall, this came before the planning commission. My timeline's all screwed up. Last year, really last year, maybe late 2019, they were looking to include a bunch of new structures, exterior structure for forage of material. Those have since disappeared, and now they're looking to pave the entire area on the back there and add three new detention basins. They've also received a variance for the easement. There's the ITC easement there. They submitted information or documentation from ITC regarding that also, but they're looking to add, I can't remember, it was fifty-some thousand square feet of impervious surface there with a loading space on the western entrance there coming off of Bemis Road. There'll still be a fence going all the way around it. There would be a gate on the western entrance of Bemis Road and also, excuse me, within the ninety-foot wide easement there on the west side of Bemis Road. That would just be for the utility company to access it. And I believe that in the last time we met, last meeting we met regarding this, they were gonna speak with the police and fire department about granting them access to both gates, or at least to the one gate on the east side in the event of emergency. The no walk requirements are covered, are required in this because they are not adding any above-ground structures, parking and loading. They're adding two new loading zones next to some existing structures, Building Four and Building Two, excuse me, Building Two and Building Five. Those meet the requirements. Site access and circulation is not going to change much from the way it is now. Customers will be able to enter and exit off of the east or western access point on Bemis Road to pick up materials. That's all sorts of deliveries will be made. That meets minimum with requirement. One thing that we did talk about last time is improvements to the apron there, the curb cut. I think the site plan show just falling short of that and improving. I think it was right around the right-of-way line, maybe a little bit beyond with the pavement. So we request that that be included as part of the plan. And storm utilities, that would be reviewed by the engineering consultant. One question we had, sorry, skip ahead here, was the 5,000-square-foot area on the east or western access point just inside there is labeled for coverage storage area. This is that, you know, materials will be moved there. We would like to know what's temporary. Does that mean that there's, it's just gonna be a staging area for them to be stocked? Is that gonna be for seasonal materials? Is there gonna be, you know, constant rotation or what have you? More for clarification than anything, just so we know. The landscape, they meet all the landscape requirements. If you recall, the, there's the easement there along Bemis Road for public utilities, and at one point they had some plantings in there. Those have since been moved back outside of that easement. And along the eastern proposed drainage basin there, which is just west of the ninety-foot wide easement, since that basin does come right up to the right-of-way line, they have put all the landscape material and screening on the north side of that for, you know, we believe that that's sufficient. It's not a very deep detention basin. It's gonna be natural, grass and other things, so it's not going to stand out, in our opinion. Then along the, one of the property boundaries there with the eastern hillside, they're going to, since they can't put any vegetation in there because it is in the easement, they're gonna be putting up a fence in place of the vegetation. Talking about on page six here. And the planning commission needs to review the location type and the height of the proposed fence that they're gonna be putting in. No new lighting, dumpster enclosure is gonna be for the existing, or with the existing services, no new signs, there's no, before plans are obligations for, if they weren't, I don't know, they'll be just, so, you know, we feel that this, with the exception of a couple of comments on their clarifications, we feel that, you know, this works. Obviously, the amount of impervious surfaces increased, and so a lot of the determination of this is gonna be based on what engineering saw with the calculations in there with the proposed detention basins. That's all we got.
We also have a report from OHM. Mike, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I can just go over it briefly. Similar to Chris, OHM is recommending that we remove this preliminary plan. Actually, they do have some comments of just additional information they want for the final site plan that Chelsea Lumber doesn't seem to have issue getting, and actually, that'll come when we get to the final site plan. But as of right now, OHM's comfortable moving this forward.
Do you want to comment on your report, too?
Yeah, mine was just a brief little memo, because as Chris mentioned, we did see this almost a year ago, so just wanted to give you guys an update of why this is coming back as a preliminary plan. So that's just base outline of some of the changes that are going on. Like Chris mentioned, no new buildings this time, just impervious surfaces and important mention area, so nothing, nothing too outstanding in our report.
Any questions for Chris and Mike? Go ahead, Dean.
Chris, can you clarify, in our SBA one zone, we don't have any definition of how much impervious surface can be allowed on a lot?
No. That's mostly by lot coverage area, and asphalt doesn't count towards that.
Okay. And then also the issue concerning outside storage, which I think you've already mentioned. Do we have, knowing that we do have ordinances about outside storage and so forth, what do we need to add or put as a condition in this in terms of clarifying that and where it can be placed?
Well, that's why I want to find out what temporary means, if it's seasonal, you know, because seasonal can be there for six months, or if it's just a staging area. Obviously, they'll have all these on-site for units in place now, so I would have to look into that depending on what they say.
But I mean, our ordinance would supersede that, I would think, too, also, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you.
Anybody else? Otherwise, we have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the report dated February 22nd, 2021, from City Planner Atkins, reported dated, and then there's a report dated February 25th, 2021, from OHM Advisors, and a memo dated March 3rd, 2021, from Mike Green.
Good job, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved, it's been moved, Brian is seconded Dean.
Commissioner Bearcley?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Bearcley?
Aye.
Chief Harp?
Aye.
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 Commissioner Trica, with you? Commissioner Neil? Aye. And Commissioner Rother?
Aye.
You have eight ayes and one no.
Motion is carried out. Now, we have a couple minutes or ten minutes here that's allowed to the applicant for your tonight. Do you have anything you want to add?
Joe Maynard. Joe, I suppose. So Joe gave it to you. It's all you, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Joe.
Okay, so yeah, this, this plan has been, was brought before you previously. As Chris mentioned, actually did a great job explaining it all. Basically, looking to remove the buildings, get the parking lot in the back area paved for access around the building, and then create storm water detention and landscaping. We did add the secondary fire access knox box to the Bemis Road access gate. I don't believe there would be any issues with going back to the improvements we had previously had along Bemis Road to get that entrance drive updated. And then I would have to clarify with the owner regarding the temporary storage, but that's been on the plan previously as well. I'm probably in the same thing as you, is it's a staging area that they used on load trucks or load trucks, either going or coming for the day, just as a temporary place. I think is being used now, it's slightly gravel. So that's basically with your approval today, we would proceed forward with OHM, get our infiltration testing completed, and be back before you for final site plan in the coming months or so. So I guess I'll leave it for questions, if you have any.
Seeing any? There's a motion to open the public hearing. It has been moved, F., seconded Young, to open the public hearing. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Stella Wockmuth, and my husband Roger is just out of sight here of the camera. We live at 863 West Bemis, so we're the residential section on the plan. And we just moved here last spring, and to be honest, trying to catch up with stuff, we didn't know until we got notice in the mail a few days ago that anything was planned. And I didn't have an opportunity to even look at the plan until late this afternoon. But honestly, when I looked at the plan, my heart just dropped. What we, what I saw was basically that the lumberyard is gonna come out on both sides of us and fully surround our house with chain-link fence and the barbed wire. So I, I just have a few comments. I mean, again, really concerned because they had no idea that this was something that was planned in this area. And certainly, when we moved to Celine, we had, had no idea that this was gonna happen. So again, I apologize if it seems a little disjointed, but, no, sorry. So part of the reason why we bought the house was that even though we knew that the lumberyard was in the back, and we tried to be real good neighbors with the lumberyard, and we expect the activity and the trucks that come in on the west side, you know, through the back entrance and stuff, that it is active and it is noisy during the day. And so the idea of that being expanded to both sides of our house is really concerning for us, too. There's a lot that goes on during the day, and there's a lot of noise. It basically would totally surround our backyard to do that. We wouldn't be able to go outside in the day and do things in the backyard because we'd be surrounded on all sides with activity. We'd basically be sitting on the inside of the lumberyard during the day, looking kind of like a prison yard from the plans that I saw. I know that there's some conversations about landscaping. I didn't see those plans. I don't know exactly what that was intended to look like. You know, we live with our two young grandsons, and we're just really concerned about the quality of life that we would have there. We love, absolutely love, the views that we have from our front and our east windows. That's the main reason that we bought the house, the beautiful views of the Braun Farm. This would take the entire east side view out of reach for us. And, you know, this, we wouldn't be able to sell our house. No one would buy our house, surrounded on three sides with a lumberyard. And the value of our house that we just bought last spring would just plummet. And so, I mean, I don't, it's the first time I've ever talked to a council before. I've never had to do this before. I don't know if there's anything else that you need to hear from us, but we are just really concerned with what this is going to be. I thought we were in a residential zone.
Thank you. Time's up. Landscaping doesn't come to the final anyway, correct? Do you address some of those concerns at the final?
They submit a landscaping plan with this plan. Naturally, some of it might change before the final, like all any more details that need to be added, but it is in this plan. And I think it's noted pretty well in Chris's report that they currently meet, you need to report, yes, they meet all the landscaping requirements.
Mr. Chairman, for the questioner's benefit, can Mr. Green also elaborate on, on the fact that this is a preliminary site plan and that there will be a final site plan review before any dirt can be moved or any construction activity can commence? Can you talk a little bit about the process for the petitioner's benefit?
Yep, that is correct, Mary. So the way this works normally is the applicant comes to the city and describes a project of how they want to go about it. If it's a very simple project, like the planning commission has done before, we would do a combined preliminary and final site plan, something that we know is not going to be contentious or anything like that, or that's relatively small. Bigger projects such as this, we break it out into multiple steps, which is why we're in preliminary site plan stage. So the applicant will submit their plan of what their project is, and it's a pretty good detailed plan, but we know there's gonna be missing, a missing piece here or there. So we'll go about it. Our planners, such as Mr. Atkins, will do a review of it, and our engineers at OHM will also do a review. Based on their comments, the applicant will make changes, and then it will come back to the planning commission one final time, potentially, and the planning commission will review any additional changes that have been made and render a vote forward. And the planning commission gives them okay, and they're good to proceed with the project, and we'll just go, and it'll transition to staff on what building's permanent.
Now, I know, I know notices are sent, and I know the mail is horrendous. Any way you can get the neighbors or anybody that may be a little sore, I know I'm, I'm just throwing it out, because to get this notice two days, three days from this meeting...
I mean, what, what we can do is if the, if the lady who's just spoke were to provide us especially an email address, I know that staff could provide an email communication to her well in advance of when this item may reappear on a planning commission agenda for final place, site plan consideration. We could also send the electronic documents for her review and provide comment well in advance.
Can you do that? I mean, that would be fine?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, it does not appear that there are any additional public comments for the public hearing, so I would move to close the public hearing at 7:34.
It's been moved by Brian and seconded by, uh, by Mr. Chair, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 The ayes have. Alright, any comments, questions from planning commission members? Dean, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No problem. Couple questions, just understanding, the buffer zone that we have between different uses in terms of residential and commercial is which, and in the SBA one, have we attained and met all those in terms of the surrounding of both of those properties that are residential?
Yes. All the setbacks have been that, yes.
Okay. And one question, I know we've looked at this in the past, and I didn't, I mean, the last time that we looked at this a year ago, I didn't believe that, you know, all this pavement was gonna occur. What, and when we talk about storage and so forth, I am concerned about the location between the two houses, which is now gonna be paved, and that looks like that would end up being a storage location right between two residentials. And we've seen this happen in town before, where we've surrounded a residential property with commercial, and in this type of, it seems like it's kind of an overreach into that location, even though it may be part of that parcel. And we know that those homes were moved to that location from Michigan Avenue. I, I'm wondering, what is that going to be actually used for? That, that little T that jets into, or that part that jets into the, in between the two locations? Because that looks like an area that if it's gonna be used for storage and so forth, seems like an overreach in terms of our SBA one approach.
I'll, I'll let Joe answer it. I don't have any more information than what you see on the site plan there.
And I guess I didn't go into full detail with the owner on exactly what these areas are, but my understanding is it's relocating some of the outdoor storage that they have now, and giving them the ability to maneuver better and provide better access for their trucks coming and going. So that's, I mean, I guess, you know, I'd have to come back with the owner with a better, clear understanding of exactly how the site works. So we just followed their direction and what they were looking for.
How did this change, Chris, from the last time? I thought there was gonna be a new building and some other things, so this did change, didn't it?
Yeah, there was. Give me a second, I can go back and pull my review. There were, there were three additional buildings that they were gonna put in, and there was one on the west side there that couldn't, that didn't meet the setback requirement. When did, when did this come first, first, was it 2020?
The last time we looked at it, I, actually, I got it here on my...
I got it right here, Chelsea Lumber. Yeah, March, so, almost a year today.
Yep.
It looks like there's just one, eleven, eleven thousand, two hundred square foot structure, yeah, on the western side of the house there.
My concern is that this plan has changed significantly from what we saw a year ago to now, and an understanding, you know, where storage is gonna be, it's like buildings that would have held whatever products and stuff would have been inside, and now it sounds like we're gonna shift it all to the outside, which makes it a different look. So I'm not sure, and understanding that whole change and, you know, there is concern there in terms of how it would appear and what we do currently in terms of all of our SBA one areas, so I'm just gonna bring that up. I'm done.
Any other questions? I'm gonna ask this, the detention ponds are gonna be dry, correct? Maybe scanning water?
I didn't hear that question. If you could say it again.
I'm sorry, and I just, I just, I just, the new detention ponds in there are gonna be dry, correct?
Yes, they were intended to be dry detention ponds, correct?
Okay, there is a motion to approve, not approve, or approve with conditions. Preliminary site plan to develop 2.4 acres and construct three new storm water detention ponds located at a 7.38 acre lot of 600 East Michigan Ave, Celine, Michigan, parcel number 181231390017. What's your pledge?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick to staff, does the motion need to enumerate the six conditions in the February 22nd memo from Carlisle Warman?
It's spoken on the last page of their document.
The biggest one I think that applies for you guys would be number three, getting clarification on that. The rest of them are kind of just recommendations for them to think about. So, for example, number six, the applicant has to coordinate with emergency services, then that certainly needs to be a condition tied to them, but I think the biggest thing you guys had concerns about was temporary storage. So if I think number three.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that what's been presented is sufficient for preliminary site plan approval. I'll have some additional questions and concerns when we get to final, but I'll move to approve with condition number three, as outlined on the memo from Carlisle Warman dated February 22nd, planning 21.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Morrow and seconded by F. to approve.
Was that a call for a vote? I don't think we had any discussion, did we not? Sorry, I was having a hard time hearing what, I heard my name, but I wasn't sure what you're calling. I guess I just had, from a discussion standpoint, it was recommended that we, the planning commission, address the fence, and I don't think we've done that. Are we sort of suggesting we're going to do that as part of final? Is that sort of the implication here?
I believe that, yes.
Okay, alright, so I now hear that you're calling for my vote. I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bearcley?
Yes.
Councilmember Bearcley?
No. No.
Dean Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Hough?
Aye.
Mayor Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Frigga?
Stain.
No.
Yes.
Okay, you have seven ayes, two nays, and one ayes.
Okay, the motion...
Sorry, six ayes, two nays.
Thank you. Motion is approved. Unfinished business. Mike, you want to talk a little bit about the new map?
Yeah, so we're down at discussion items now. We got this to you guys a little late, so I can always... But if you guys have the map, we got you guys an updated provisioning center map for you to look at, because that was the main concern from last time. So Chris and his team worked to update this. On the map, all the green highlighted parcels are everywhere currently a provisioning center could be. So the way they did, we didn't include circles or lines where the school districts are, like on the old map, but this pretty much shows everywhere it could potentially be. As for the other maps, really nothing of those have changed, as the buffer zones don't affect those. The way the ordinance is written are buffers only affect provision centers, because code of your passports, their thought was just any public facing business is one that really needs to be affected by the buffers. So this is where we're at. Actually, me and Chris talked about this over the past couple days. We'll make a little couple minor edits to this before public hearing stage if we ever get there, and for those council. But we figured this is a next little update for you guys to continue your discussion.
Mike, will you be sending that out?
I think we just sent it out like an hour before the meeting.
That was my fault. We, we, we sent it in an email.
If I may, for Councilmember Mayor Pretend, Gearbox's benefit, and those participating remotely who may not, may have not seen the document, basically where a provisioning center could be located is on the Michigan Avenue corridor from Maple to just beyond Renshler Farm, including the properties to the south, and then the small, the small parcel adjacent to Mill Pond, and then some of the commercial areas around or adjacent to, excuse me, west Michigan Ave, from essentially Curtis Park to the city limits. It's on your screen now.
Yeah, I got, I got co. So this is the updated map. As you see, all the school properties are highlighted gray everywhere where we think provisioning center could currently go based on the zoning district we have it in and on the school buffers. So as you'll see, like the west side of town, east side of town, all these are blanked out because it's too close to high school property. Everything else is just based on the current zoning.
So the American Legion property.
Yeah, because it's Zone C, I think it's C2 right now technically, so if they were to sell...
Go ahead, Dean.
Is it possible to make the other maps the same as this?
Yeah, we can work on updating those, yeah.
I mean, this is, this is a good, I mean, all the green are heavily commercial areas except for the American Legion Division, and, you know, appropriate spots, whereas some of the others were a little close to schools or residential or whatever.
So you'd be looking to change the zoning district for some of them? Because all the other uses are completely just based on, the buffers don't affect those uses at all. That's how it currently works. Fortunately, I don't have time on this call, so if we want to do it that way, we could have those buffers affect other industries. The only issue is, a lot of them, a lot of them we put in I-2 zoning, because we think are industrial uses. If we do that with the current buffer we have, the entire east side of town pretty much is going to be useless.
If I may, Mr. Green, Mr. Chairman, I think the logic, Dan, was that the most restrictive standard should be applied to provisioning centers, which is essentially, I mean, for lack of a better way to articulate it, retail of medical marijuana. The other, the other legal options for medical marijuana enterprises are viewed generally as being more benign, having less of a definite impact on the, I think that's the reason for the disparity.
Any other questions, concerns? Not hearing any. There is a motion to adjourn.
Well, if I can, if you guys are good with this, we have no objection. Katrina and I can work on starting to set the public hearing up for this, because that'd be the next step. So you guys will hold the public hearing for the zoning ordinance only, and so we can set that up probably first meeting in April, and then we'd go from there. Do you guys are okay with that?
So Mike, is this the only map we're going to use, or are you going to correct the other ones?
No, we'll correct them all. We'll update all of them. This is just the one with the biggest changes.
This one looks to be the most clearest in understanding where it is, where you end up putting the circles and stuff. I think that just is, just not the best tool to use.
Yeah, we can update those, yeah. Yeah, so, like, these are the old ones. Essentially, we'll just clean these up, have them highlighted, and propose to use, like this one's grower processor. So we'll clean them up. You guys are good with that? Well, we're going to set the public hearing up like that first meeting in April. Are you all right? Is everybody okay with that?
I am.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the governor's newest directive, public bodies, specifically councils or subsets of city government, can resume in-person meetings with up to 25 people in attendance.
So most likely, we'll probably continue to have a hybrid. We'll do the same thing as we always do, ask people to attend. And yeah, big topics like that, we'll play it back here and see how it goes.
And I can tell you what we're going to be doing for council moving forward, is if any member of the public or any council member wants to attend, that will be, obviously you're encouraged and welcome to do that. Obviously, if you're not feeling well, you're strongly emphasized that you stay home, and you wear a mask, and you engage in social distancing. But staff will participate remotely to ensure that council members and members of the public have the first right to attend.
Mr. Chairman, may I recommend to the city that they invest in some new microphones? It's hybrid.
Yeah, we'll get that straight now at the next meeting. After not doing this for a year, I think we're all a little rusty.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not the issues we had at the beginning, but, you know, you can tell where the microphones are situated by, you know, how loud the speaker is, for the most part. So it'd just be helpful to have a few more of them around the room, I think.
All right, thanks, Bill. Anything else? There is a motion to adjourn at 7:52. All those in favor, state a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. You can have that recording. We'll give it to you later.